I'm calling to order the city council regular meeting for today, Monday, March 21st. I ask the acting city clerk to do a roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Protim Kanter.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Invite everyone to say the pledge of allegiance. Let me say this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll take a motion for someone to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the table and removal of the American power action item.
Need a second?
Second. I would like to remove six A and six B.
That would be under the consent agenda. We're just doing the approval of the agenda right now as a whole.
Okay.
Is there something that leaves feeling on the other part of the agenda?
No.
Okay, so as we move into second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Or approval.
Roll call, Mayor Protim Kanter.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Thank you.
Karen.
And so now we have to suspend the city council and adjourn as a zoning board of appeal.
That is correct.
We roll call for a zoning board of appeal. Right?
Yes, and quickly, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt, may I? Can you close the blinds so we, we're getting the visual distraction of the road going behind, it's messing with it. Thank you.
I can't do this openly, just saying that it's just 105.
No, it was just, it was just the blinds being open, thank you.
Okay, so we need a roll call for the ZBA, please.
Roll call for ZBA, councilmember Canes.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protim Kanter.
Present.
You have a call for the ZBA.
Thank you. We will be discussing the variance requests for 18931 Rainbow Court. Is there? Is there anyone here that represents the actual resident?
The resident is on Zoom with us this evening. Let me, let me just log her in. Good evening, Ms. Price, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, wonderful. Right, so Ms. Price has submitted a, an application for me? Ms. Price has submitted an application for a variance to install a generator in her side yard of her, of her property. She is part of the condominium complex over there off of Golden Gate on Rainbow Court. The ordinance says that generators should be installed in the, in the rear yard, but I am going to turn it over to Eric Peach from Giffords Webster to go over this in detail.
Thank you, Suzy. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Eric Peach. I'm with Giffords Webster, the community planning consultant. This is my first time in person with you today, so I look forward to working more with you in the future. I've been with Giffords Webster for a little over a year now and working with Lathrop Village more remotely. So like I said, I look forward to getting to know you more as we go. As was stated, the subject site is located at 18931 Rainbow Court in Lathrop Village. The subject property is located along the west side of Rainbow Court and south of I-696. The rear of the property about Santa Barbara Drive, and the property is zoned R3 single-family cluster housing, which contains an existing single-family home and abuts other R3 zone parcels. The closest point of the home to the south side lot line is about 8.8 feet, but the house jogs in and has a 12-foot, nine-foot, excuse me, 12.9-foot setback. It is in this area that the applicant is proposing to install a permanent generator. So the variance being requested and considered this evening is from section 4.12. That F, which requires power generators to be located in the rear yard of the property. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow an 18-kilowatt power generator unit to be placed in the property's south side yard, not the rear yard. It appears the side setback for accessory mechanical equipment is met. The generator is 48 inches wide, four feet wide by two feet deep, and is required to be a minimum of 18 inches from a structure. The applicant indicates it would be placed five feet from the home, which will result in a setback of approximately 5.75 feet. And we did some calculations based on the ASWOT survey, and that's how we came to that, to that dimension. So in short, the generator will have approximately five feet, 10 inches left from the, from the property line with the adjacent neighbor to the south. We do have evidence that the homeowners association or the condo association has written approval for the placement of the generator in this location, as does the property owner to the south and the north who are included in the packet. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, yes. The key in the statements from the applicant is that the generator is required to be five feet from a window opening so that carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide gases are far enough away to dissipate.
And, and is the applicant the homeowner?
The question is if the applicant's the original homeowner? I believe so, but she can verify this price.
Yes, I am. It was a new build in 1996.
I guess what I'm concerned that I have is in order to approve a variance, the, you know, one of the, one of the, I think that you led back to the whole of your heart, you know, self-created. The concern that I have is it looks like it can meet the five-foot threshold and the 18-inch building in, in the backyard. It just looks like it has to be on the pavers in order to do that. So is there, is there another zoning issue? Or dimensional setback request that is preventing it from going in the backyard? Or, not to my knowledge, no. It was stated in the application that due to certain difficulties, it's, it's not preferred to be put in that location, but I would defer to the applicant to elaborate on the reasons behind that.
And if I may, I would suggest perhaps letting the applicant at this point present her case here directly from her.
Ms. Price, would you like to speak about your project?
With respect to the space in the back of my house, there are windows in the back of my house. There's no five-foot of clearance to provide for the installation in the rear of my home. I submitted photographs to show there are two windows in the back of my home, and then there's a sunroom attached to the home as well. So there's no space in the back of the home in which to install the generator.
I skated down in your letter, thank you. Is there anything else that you wanted to provide, any more information?
Is that question to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Other than what you see, the, the actual diagrams on the side of my house, there is a seven and a half feet of limited common space that is attributable to my property that I could use. That's adjacent to my property line itself. And then there's another seven and a half feet that the homeowner at 18921 would have access to as limited common area.
Yeah, I get with your, what you're saying about is that the problem self-created and. And, if I may too, I would maybe, just to help guide you in your deliberations here, I'm looking at page five of your agenda packet, and so that's the end of Eric and Jill's letter. And it gives, the string would be VCD, it gives some of the legal standards that you go through, and some of our, recommend the boards to go through that and just look at each one and kind of take a vote amongst yourselves of, and actually, I misspoke, starting with A on the other page, talking about the physical surroundings. And, and that just gives the guidance of the actual legal standards to show that there is a necessity for that, you know, or the necessity versus just a desire, I guess you could so speak, but the, yeah. So I would suggest maybe go, starting with the first three A, you know, is there something particular about the surrounding shape or conditions of the specific property involved that would present a hardship if the strict letters of the regulations are carried out? Meaning like saying you have to put it in your rear, the rear. And mere inconvenience or increased development costs are not such hardships. So maybe take out, everybody kind of think about that, whether they think that applies. And then, you know, look at the second, the second one, which is if there are some certain things that are her property that are unique that would not be applicable to other properties in the general vicinity. And then the hardship if that was created by herself or anything that she did. And then also the next one is if you were to grant the variance, would it have any adverse effects on the others around her adjacent? And then whether it would be an impairment at all to the public health, safety, general welfare? And pretty much, yeah, but pretty much it, and whether or not there's something less invasive or a variance that maybe is a little bit of a lesser than what she's asking for is possible in this case. So those are kind of all the factors that I would request that you look at and then make your decision. That, but I appreciate that. That's what we were about to do with the fact of when I was thinking about the shape in the actual hardship of practical. So we had it. Well, it's really where, what I was going to say is that there's still space in the back. That is not, the ordinance does not create a practical difficulty for this particular generator. Because from what I was seeing in the picture on page 19, there is a side that doesn't look like it's a part of the common area right where the pavers are, right at the edge of it.
We, I'm getting to that picture.
If you're looking at the.
Five feet, right?
Yeah.
Looks like you're going to go from that wall, come out five feet.
Yeah.
And, and, and it is, you know, it meets the, meets the zoning requirement.
Do you see what?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Yep. Something right here, so we say it's even from the wall, five feet from the window. And probably you could move it, if we flip, from looking at the picture, you could move it to the right of the window, facing the window, and you probably not even have it five feet out. It's the main thing, the five, the five feet from.
Back behind the sunroom?
No. The red law or orange, it's from five feet out of the paper.
On page 19. Where the pavers are in the corner.
Here?
Yes. No, on the paper, though.
How would you put it on the paper? That's her patio.
Yeah, but that doesn't cause, it's not, it does not go against our, it's not giving her a practical difficulty. It will go against the ordinance.
Correct.
Get on her patio is kind of a practical difficulty, isn't it?
Well, the difficulty is.
It's an aesthetic consideration. That's more of an aesthetic. It doesn't, she's not incapable of putting it there, I guess is where, is where the distinction is versus A.
Could you print it within five feet of it? Is that powders because of the fumes?
The, the five foot from the, from the wall and the windows, that's, that is for the fumes, yes. Yes.
Nearing to the side.
I, I mean, I, looking at the picture, let me make sure, yeah.
You feel that, you know, going through, I just caution you to, because once, we want to be consistent in application for all. So if you're getting a generator here that's going to go on the side, there, that you're setting a precedent. So I want to make sure that, you know, legally you have gone through, even though you might think aesthetically that's not going to be this nice, you know, I totally understand that. But that's not necessarily one of the legal requirements, and you're going to, many other people potentially, you know, should. So what, that's why I was asking you to kind of go through. And if you feel that, that, that the various factors here, that that can fit into it, like in your opinion, if that's fine, just as long as you do apply the factors to your reason.
I did go out to Joan today, and I wanted to see the site for myself. And I believe across the street from her, somebody does have a generator at the side of their house. Am I mistaken, Joan?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a neighbor with a generator on the side of their house?
Yes.
So somebody already heard it. So if you can give us the address, we'll see whether or not they went out for a zoning variance. It's unfortunate, because if they didn't, that's a new problem.
Well, I did see the site, and in my opinion, I don't have a problem with it going there. She had given me, I did walk around the side. That is really tight. As you can see, she's got a ton of windows in the back. And if carbon monoxide is a problem, I wouldn't want it close to all those windows.
But this is again, what our city attorney is saying, it's not about opinion base. It has to go by page four.
Go ahead. No, I agree. I agree. And I'm, I'm looking at the site, and I'm seeing one tiny window, and I'm seeing a lot. That seems like a safer location to me. We're talking safety for the resident, too.
And I'm, we're just talking the law, the ordinance law right here.
Well, and I think we need to find out how the other resident.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yes, that will be, we'll figure that out, but that does not necessarily impact, it does not. Because the, and I, just having seen the, the diagram for that condo development, there may be something about that particular property, if they've received, if they received variance. Let's assume for the sake of argument that, that they have, there may be something about that property that is unique, that would require that that, that that generator go onto the side yard. So those facts may not match up with Ms. Price, with, those facts and circumstances of that property may not line up with the facts and circumstances of Ms. Price's, that's all.
Of course, the person who went out to do it, generator company, that is not a safe location for that supply.
Not, I, I respectfully disagree. I'm talking about the physical attributes of the property that would, that would impact.
There was one concern, and I think of, you know, was pretty much clarified, just to make sure that you do not believe that her proposal, and maybe the applicant can answer to that, would be encroaching on the common area of the, or is that still on?
Yeah, yeah. We believe that the placement of the generator and its dimensions could fit in the area and not encroach into the common area.
That would be.
And on the side.
On the side, yeah. That's what I said, too. I measured it out.
So let's go through the, just so everyone that is listening to knows that when it comes to considering the variance request, is that we go by these, I don't know how many numbers they are, but there is actual standards that we do have to go through for considering the variance request. First one is because of a particular physical surrounding shape or topographical condition of the specific property involved.
Particular.
Particular hardship will result to the applicant if the strict letter of the regulations are carried out. Mere inconveniences or increased development costs shall not be deemed hardships under the terms of this provision. So does this particular, where the generator, where they want to have the generator located, does it go against A?
I feel that it does, because it's, to me, it seems more of an inconvenience, or inconvenience as opposed to a necessity.
I disagree. I think there's too many windows in the back, and.
No, but just, just reading.
I'm just saying.
Just reading A, not, not our, our opinion, just reading the A portion of considering the variance request.
The regulation says that it's considered safe at five feet. It can be five feet from the back, from the back of the house.
Right?
Right there.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, you want to chime in on the first one, Karen? Okay, then let's move on to B. The factual circumstances upon which an application for deviation is based, is based are unique to the property for which the deviation is sought and not applicable to the city generally or to other property within the same zoning classification.
Don't have many properties in that same zoning.
Well, we're also going to find out about the address. If you could drive over, probably tomorrow or something, to find out that address.
Yes.
About the other generator.
Absolutely.
Next one is any alleged practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship caused by this ordinance has not been created by any persons presently or previously having an interest in the property.
That's the one I'm struggling with.
I, and I would say that that's the one that I struggle with also, only because there is no practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship or not, or for putting it on the back porch.
Yeah, it's just an aesthetic, but it's not an actual hardship.
Oh, and I, please understand, I understand that it might not visually be pleasing, but going for the ordinance.
No, I'm agreeing with you. I'm just, I'm just saying what everyone else's, sounds like.
The proposed deviation will not adversely affect the purpose or objectives of this ordinance, nor impair the adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, nor increase the hazard from fire, flood, and other dangers of said property, nor diminish the marketable value of adjacent lands and buildings, nor increase the congestion in public streets. E, the proposed deviation, oh, I'm sorry, you're going to say?
No, I was just saying, I don't think so.
The proposed deviation will not otherwise impair the public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare. As the benefit to the applicant will be real and substantial, and any detriment to the neighboring property owners and occupants or the community at large is not substantial or is illusionary. I'm sorry. Benefits and detriments shall be determined in relation to the factors which impair the value and use of properties as related in D and E.
The small problem with this one, in that, you know, I do realize that the, the two neighbors have been consulted and don't have the, don't have an issue with it, but the, you know, the variance goes with the property and becomes permanent. So those neighbors may not be there in the future, and other neighbors may object, so I have a small issue with that one.
The homeowners association approved it.
But there, I mean, there still could be an issue, though, and it's, it's, could be loud once you, that's probably typically why it should be in the backyard in the first place.
Yeah, and, and on the one side, it's, it's not on the garage side, when you're facing the house to the left, it's on the resident's side of the house, not the garage side. So there's no possibility for that, for that to be done there. So in the future, that could, could grow.
And the next one, the applicant is both willing and able to provide additional amenities beyond those minimally required by this ordinance and/or restrict the use of the property beyond those limitations.
You have a tie?
Placed on the property by this ordinance so that the fair market value of neighboring properties will be enhanced beyond the values which would accrue to them if the property were developed in strict conformity with the.
I don't think that one's applicable in this case, really. I mean, I think it talks about things like screening, maybe add screening or something like that, or, but.
An age the same or substantially similar request shall not have been presented to the council in the form of a petition for a zoning amendment and been expressly denied and rejected, excuse me, after a public hearing. And so that's where we would have to find out about the neighbor who has the generator.
Correct.
Well, that, I think you can, you know that there was not, I mean, pretty much a zoning amendment.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. No, I'm, I'm also, I was thinking of the second part of it being expressly denied and rejected after a public hearing. And that's more or less what I was thinking about, whether or not someone.
Right, so they, they may have tried for the variance, or they may have just done it.
Right. So what happens if they just did it?
All right, well, if they did.
I just want to, the planner or someone else just to say what happened.
They will be notified that they are in violation of the city's ordinance. They will be instructed to appear before the zoning board of appeals to request a variance. And if they're denied that variance, then they will be required to remove that generator.
Question about the public hearing. The ad in the Southfield Sun, March 10th ad, a paper, the ad said that the public hearing was February 28th, seven o'clock PM. Was that correct?
No, that was, that was the initial, that was the initial estimated date for when we were, we were planning to do this. We did request more information from Ms. Price, and so that, that was delayed. The correct public hearing was adjusted, the date was adjusted in the notice.
In the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Madam, may I speak, please? I hope you can hear me. First, I think there was some comment made about the noise. And the decibel rating for this particular generator is 65, and the minimum required, maximum rather, is 70, so it's well below the maximum noise that you all have established. And secondly, for me to put the, the generator in the back of my house, it would have to be in the middle of my patio area, because it has to be at least five feet from a window. There are two windows in the back of my house. I can't get it right next to the windows, because that's going to cause a problem with carbon monoxide. The other, then there's a sunroom there. So without, with me tearing up the patio area, I suppose that still would cause a problem unless I bricked up the two windows in the back of my house. Because it can, it has to be five feet from a window. There are two windows back there. So even the, when the, the young man came out to do the estimate, he walked around my house, and these are people who install the generators. And it's been their experience that this is the only practical place that I can place it to ensure my safety.
Thank you. What we were talking about, according to the, the actual zoning, the actual, for the zoning ordinance, from what we see on the pictures that were provided, there is a space five feet away from your window on the pavers.
That's just what I said. It'd have to be placed in the middle of the. That's just what I said, he'd have to place in the middle of the pavers. I'd have to tear the pavers out.
Of the patio or?
The pavers.
Would that be a financial hardship to have to have that taken out?
It would still might be a problem be- because of the two windows. There's a kitchen window and then there is a master bedroom window. Those two windows are on the back of my house. There's no space between those two windows to give us a five-foot clearance. On either side. And I'm sure when this house was constructed, there was no thought that one day a generator might need to be installed. I'm looking to install this for my health and my safety. I was out of power for six days back in August. Lost everything in my freezer, lost everything in my refrigerator. So, I mean, this is why I, I had not planned on buying a generator by any stretch of the imagination. But because of the situation back in August, maybe you all's homes were not impacted, mine was, our whole area. Was without power for six days. I don't want to have to walk around my house with a candle trying to see. In, in the event of another blackout or another power outage. That is why I decided to look into getting a generator.
Politically, I completely understand that, um, Eric, but, um, I understand, um, what Mr. Price is saying, but. Again, putting it on the paper five feet away, that would also be where she could still have the generator and, you know, um. And that would be within our ordinance, right?
The, the five feet?
Yes.
Into paper, yes, yeah, yeah.
And then I think you were the one that said about the noise, uh, you want to clarify what you mean by that.
Oh, no need to clarify.
No, she was saying that it's not loud, and I think you meant that it's not loud now, but we don't know if you sell the candle, uh, later.
I mean, well, yeah, basically what I said was, I mean, the residents pretty much playing off of, if the resident doesn't have a problem with it now. Property is sold, the next neighbor could have an issue with it, regardless of the approved decibel. Someone could still have an issue with it.
But it wouldn't be in violation of the ordinance.
It would still be in violation of the ordinance if it's on the side of the house.
That's what I'm talking about the noise, Kevin, he was just talking about the noise.
Is there any other discussions regarding this?
Nope, you need to. Yes, please make a motion to, uh.
And I might be jumping ahead of it, but we always recommend to, that you make the motion in a positive. So even if you don't want to grant the variance, the motion is made in a. To grant the variance and then it's voting yes or no. So you can still make the motion even if you, you aren't in favor of it. But it just helps to clear, because sometimes you can, it, it doesn't work out when you say, I make a motion to deny. And it, it's just much more clear if you say I make a motion to approve and then we go over those.
I do have a question, I'm wondering, and I don't know if we can do this or not, I'm thinking that maybe we should be putting this on hold to find out about the other generator.
I would tell you that just from a legal perspective, that as one of the, um, factors that you want to look at, we never. Because this happened all the time, and it's very unfortunate, but we get that in a lot of communities where there's. But they have it, they have it, they have it, they have it, and we always say that it's not, you cannot compare. Each case is a standalone on its own. So you can't, you can't, you're not supposed to, from a legal perspective, consider what other people have.
And then wouldn't it be on the, the notice of, uh, the homeowner if she felt that, you know, the other one was?
Right.
She would have to say, bring that to us as a, as a.
Right, what is. It's just not something that we're supposed to consider.
Okay, I was, you know, okay, yeah.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, um. Uh, the, the variance that, uh.
It's been moved in seconds, are there any additional, um, comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
I'm going to say no.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
No.
Councilmember Canes?
Yeah.
And now the applicant, she can, uh, fill.
To circuit court.
And I will take a motion to adjourn the, uh, ZBI.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pulling six A and sixty.
So you made a motion, and Karen, um, so something extra in the motion, so it needs. Yes. Six A and sixty. So she want, you want all the, the minutes and all the dispersment reports removed and all of the. The departmental reports.
No, six A and sixty, dispersment reports.
I'm sorry, yes, okay.
There's a lot of interference and noise. I'm sorry, this is Dawn Medley, I'm, I'm watching, but, but just so you all know that all the microphones are on for a lot of the people watching you.
Thank you, is there a second? Support, hey, it's been moved in second, is there any, um, discussion before the one? There are none, roll call for accepting just the departmental reports.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, so going back to, um.
There, there were, there were a few, uh, minor errors in here, but nothing, nothing substantive except for, uh. I think was on page thirty-three, uh, at the top, it says, um, in reference to the backfilling. Uh, for the, the underdirt one and a half inch water customers, it says, um. Uh, a maximum of, of two years if the amount is over two thousand, three years if the amount is over three thousand. That three thousand number should have been two thousand, so if it's, if it's under two thousand dollars, they have two years to pay for it, over two thousand, they have, uh, three years to pay for it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to move it to our next meeting to approve these because there were, um, there were, there were some things. I, I understand they were redone and we didn't have the opportunity to look at them, so.
The minutes need to be by law approved, um, at the next meeting. At which, after, so this public meeting, they have to be approved.
Okay, I don't think that's been happening, but, um.
Yeah, is there corrections that need to be made that, we just need to go through them and take care of it. You know, I mean, if they're definitely, you know, if you want to get this cleared up, and it is. At this meeting, that it needs to be done by law.
So January twenty-fourth, we were at.
Do you want to make the corrections? You want to go through any corrections?
I thought that they could be pulled, I do, you know, I, I.
Multiple, is that the same for, um, the dispersment reports also? I mean, yeah, that's what it says, do you want to go through those two or you don't? Okay, so for A, we need to make a motion for accepting the minutes. If you're not going to correct them. It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? There are none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor? Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller? Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried to accept the minutes, that's correct.
Um, okay, so here in that, this dispersment report.
Some questions? I could question, there were some, uh, deposit refunds for the company room. Is there, um, can you give us the page number, please? Yes, page thirty-eight. Um, is there, uh, are there different rates for commercial, how, how does this work? Uh, so that, that was an event that was on the sixth of February, I believe it was a pop-up event and, um, with multiple vendors or whatever. Is that treated as if it's an individual or is there a commercial rate for renting, renting a room?
No, but, well, for, they all have a deposit of three hundred dollars. And they get the three hundred dollars back if there's no damage to the room or anything like that. And then it's per hour, if they're a non-resident, it's so much, if they're a resident, so much, there is no commercial. There is not.
Um, all right, then, um. There was a refund, uh, same page, a refund from council dinner, ninety-six dollars and eighteen cents. What, where are the meals, uh, what, what account are meals billed against and where is that in the budget?
The council meals are, um, in the general government operating budget, it's the, um, government, what is it? Government services, it's the one oh one, one hundred zero zero three eight four eight account, which is government operations. And, um, the meal you're talking about. It was because, um, at that time, the, uh, city credit card was not working, so I gave my personal credit card to that for the dinner.
Okay, so the, the meals are normally put on the credit card and then they're, they're just put in go.
Government operations, yes.
There isn't a separate budget for meals or?
No, there's not.
Perhaps page thirty-nine, thirty-nine sixty on the. Credit card, perhaps that would, uh, be for meals. Up at the top, first section, some of the government services. So we use expenditures, is that what would be marked?
On the thirty, page thirty-nine?
Yeah.
No, that is probably, um. January twenty-twenty-two statement, I would have to look at that, but that could be, um, oh, I know what that is. That's for the, um, COVID tests that were purchased prior to the, the government giving them away for free. When nobody could get, um, COVID tests, the city or the managers decided to, um, get COVID tests. Because we had it, um, it come through that we could purchase some as a city, so we purchased them so that, and now the government's giving them away for free, so.
And that's what the sign up is, that you're selling tests for twenty dollars?
Correct. We've sold some, but we do have quite a few, so.
Okay. Okay, uh, next section, building grounds, we have, uh, the home, ink, repair of the elevator. Um, was that part of the? ARP fund or is this something in addition, we just have that redone or?
We have not had the repair of the elevator done yet, this is just a minor maintenance that they had to do.
Page forty. Woman Chevrolet vehicle repair, three thousand eighty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Yes, we blew an engine on a Tahoe. Unfortunately, it was a repair, we had for less than a hundred miles. It broke down again and we are now told that the engine is totaled. Uh, and there is no sight of having an engine to replace it. Because of the shortages, we've looked into, we've already got two Towas marked for July one. We're hoping that it gets approved in this year's budget, however, those Towas have not hit the ground yet, so. Right now, we are down to three operating scale cars.
And then also in that same section, there's a deductible payment for a vehicle crash, but that was in dollars, what is?
That was an officer that was involved in a car accident. We paid that to the, um. Victim or person she was involved in the accident with.
Okay, all right. Uh, under leaf collections, sacra, there's a special waste for January twenty-twenty-two for two forty-five oh seven, is that our Christmas trees?
No, that's our roll-off that we have at the DPS, we have a roll-off there.
Okay, okay, and then, um. All of my other questions were about the AT&T lease payments and the MetroPCS, and we got all of that answered, so.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no, we're doing well, Scott's not here, I'll.
Motion for dispersment reports. There any further discussion? There are none, roll call, please.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion approved too.
Thank you. Next, we'll have public comment for items on the agenda, speakers are limited to three minutes. This is where the public can, uh, express, um, what they want to on, for the items that's on the agenda. However, it's not a dialogue between the council and, um, the public. If a councilperson wants to address it, they will address it during the mayor and council conference portion. Do you have anyone that wants to speak? I think there is someone who's sending another report. I'm not seeing anyone online right now.
Hi.
Hello.
I would like to speak. On the code enforcement issue, um, because last month, when I.
Can you speak right into the mic, sorry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Last, I'm here to speak regarding the code enforcement, and last month, when I, uh, reported. That Rami spoke to me when he didn't, um, I understand now that the chief is in charge of checking on Rami because. There's been a lot of complaints, and so. And so unfortunately, as soon as I hung up from the chief, Rami came to my door and stood probably 20 feet away and with the mask on and said he did not speak to me and he kind of apologized toward it. And then he got in his car and drove maybe a foot, got out of his car, came up to me and said, is this your driveway? And I am the only house facing Bluefield where I live. And I thought, maybe he has a communication problem or understanding like the residents in their homes because he asked me if that was my trailer in the, in the driveway. And I said, no, it's not mine. It's my son's. And he said, do you have a permit? I said, no. And he told me I had a week to move it. And I said, well, I'm hoping to and I know I will because I know it's not allowed to leave your RVs in such part. And four days later, he put the notice on my door. And he said, must remove trailer on 3/3/22 Thursday. You told me the trailer would be gone by the weekend. And I have it on tape, him speaking to me that he said he'd give me a week. And so I'm thinking, he has either a problem with me or communication. Why did he say I have a week and then try and give me the notice? And saying, you know, he talked to me and I had a week and he took a picture of it. But I was a little miffed that he started out the conversation asking me if that was my driveway. And I wish I would have said no. I'm sorry, I just wanted to complain because I don't feel it was right that he did that and appeared to my door four days later and tried to give me the notice. So I just wanted to mention that on the record.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sure the chief is making notes about it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Yeah, there's other individuals that want to address the council, but not for items that are on the agenda.
Okay. There's no one else online. Okay, so let's go on to our action class. Action, the first one, for the 2022, 2022 curb and place pipe sewer rehabilitation project.
Cured and placed pipe. So we've been going out to bid for lots of things these days. We have two better bid recommendations. So last week, we had two bids come in. One for the cured in place pipe sewer rehabilitation project. And Scott can tell you more about that fabulous product.
Yeah, so at some point in February, I think I did a quick presentation on the sanitary sewer report. And we went out to bid on a little over 11,000 millimeter feet, about two miles of, we call cured in place pipe. It's trenchless technology, whether we re-lining existing sewer pipes. It's a 50-year design life. It's a felt type fabric that goes into the sewers. Impregnated with resins. And then that is heated up so then resins hard and it's like a, you know, a quarter inch to a half inch plastic pipe that's inside the old sewer, which is considered the whole pipe, so. We got three bids.
You're going to speak into the mic?
I thought it was close.
Eat it, you got to eat the mic.
We did receive three bids. They were a little higher than our estimate, not too bad. The low bid was submitted by DVM Utilities. The cost was $664,113. The next low bid was inland waters pollution control at $680,377.50. Our recommendation is to award the contract to DVM Utilities.
I had a quick question. So I know you want to recommend DVM. I was curious why you did not, in your recommendation, at least state why you did not go with the other one. I'm pretty sure I know why, but I was curious why.
Their references checked out. They have history of doing cured in place pipe and they were the low bidder.
Okay. Okay.
I have a lot of respect for the bidding process. Unless you could really just qualify somebody. We usually recommend a little better.
No, no, I know that. I was just curious why you didn't like put a sentence in there like they had the lesser of the good recommendations or something like that. Just, that was my, that was my question.
Any other questions? Hearing none, need to.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 curb and place pipe rehabilitation project with DVM Utilities for an amount of $664,113.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just the one thing I would indicate at first time. How many times do I get before you get me? This is, the cost of this is under the capital improvement bond. So we had estimated just under a half a million dollars for this. It was kind of a blind estimate because we weren't sure what we were going to see from the televising project that took place last summer. So we estimated a half a million dollars. It's a little bit more than that. But as I noted, I think last week or the, one of the recent couple of meetings, we are about one and a half million dollars under budget in our capital improvement bond. And that doesn't include a $100,000 left on a grant, so we'll actually be able to afford that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, 2022 sewer cleaning and televising program.
All right, this was the second bid that we had from last week. This is to clean and televise the storm sewer. We did receive two bids for that, for that project. The low bid was in the amount of $116,468 and was submitted by Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services. We are, the second bid was DVM Utilities and theirs was just about twice that at $382,562.50. We are recommending we award the contract to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services.
Thanks. I was trying to learn from the boss.
I want to make a motion to approve a sewer, storm sewer cleaning and televising program.
Pipe Tech.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
This one, this one is covered by, the cost of this is covered by a state grant that we were awarded recently for $100,000. And we are looking into determining whether or not the remaining roughly $84,000, whether or not that can be used for other storm sewer related.
It was less than 84 because there, you know, we added some efficiency in there and some engineering and a little bit of work from DPW if needed, so. I think 25,000 might be a better.
The point is, it's coming from a state grant and we're going to look to see if we can use all of them.
Do you have a question? So is it possible that the sewer cleaning and televising program will then lead to more work of the cured in place pipe sewer area?
Yeah, I would say very possible. So once we get all these videos, we'll assess them again, put together basically the same type of report we did for the sanitary sewer with any type of repair recommendations. These storm sewers haven't been televised since mid to late 1990s. It's been a long time since the cities looked at these and I believe back then the DPW did that project.
Hearing discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we were accepting the agenda. We are taking C, action item C off. So we'll be going down to the water filling adjustment request.
Yes, Mayor, council. I think the resident is on the Zoom, but I'm not sure how to put her on and Suzie will be right back. But I can explain to you. The resident at 27306 Golden Gate sent the council members all an email asking for her account to have a reduction in her water billing. She has been getting estimated water so her bill since August of 2019. And after the city went out to repair the meters, she had a catch-up of 84 units that were used after we went out to do it or to repair the meter. There was 84 units that were unbilled usage. And the resident doesn't agree with that and she would like council to make an adjustment to her utility billing and taking those units off her bill. And let me see if I can. Let's see. Ms. White here. We did invite her to the meeting tonight if she wanted to speak on her behalf.
Okay, so while we're trying to find her, I do have a quick question. Is that you were saying that, one, it was estimated after we went to do the actuals, we found that she was not billed 84 units and that's where the bill is coming from?
Correct, after they did a read off the meter. And from what her bill was before it was estimated to what it is now, there were 84 units somewhere.
She is, it does not seem as if Ms. White is either in the building or online.
Oh, I need someone to make a motion to approve or deny the adjustment. What is the adjustment amount?
I don't have it on here.
I thought it was.
It was like 14.
Yeah, I thought it was close to $15,000.
Four units.
But it didn't, it was up to 10 years.
And then it got up to 10 because, well, the last probably three or four buildings, it got up to 10 because their phones were not being, or letters were not being answered. So then, when our letters are not answered, we will increase people's usage to get their attention to get a hold of us.
I'm just concerned because she said two people and Tom and I don't use 10 units.
Well, that's because that was put on there as 10 to get her attention.
Well, the monthly ones weren't. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't real. It was to get her.
To get her attention so that we could fix her. And she came in to pay on her water bill and our front counter or person or our water billing clerk told her that she had used a lot of usage and that her bill was being estimated and that we need to get in and fix that meter. And that's why the meter got fixed.
Is that also the person that told her she needed to write to city council?
I told her that because I told her that I could not adjust the bill, that the only one that could adjust bill would be city council.
Okay. So. The Galaxy 521.
So I did tell her that she should write to council.
Chief, Ms. White is having an issue getting online. I'm not sure if that's her or not, but her neighbor is here. She said she's familiar with the situation. But Ms. Barron, I don't know if the council wants to speak to her.
Okay, just give me one, one second. The original balance she said is $405. And then her current bill is 1702.45 cents. And so she wants it to be.
Back to the 400 and.
She wants it to be back to.
So that would take.
So it's going to be 13 unless someone has a calculator. It'll be a little.
That would be taking the whole 84 units away. Because that would be what her last bill was.
Okay. Prior to the 400, like what has she been paying in an estimated from all these years?
Four units. The 10 units just went up. Yeah, it's been minimal bills, but people's bills fluctuate. They might be four, but they could be seven. It's just, they do fluctuate depending on, and with the 84 units, we don't know if she had a leak anytime during that time that wasn't caught because of an estimated bill.
What's the average for a two-person household?
I can't say.
Four units? That's just the base. That's the down.
That's a minimum bill. Zero to four is a minimum bill, so a lot of people have that. But there are people that have two in a house will use fire suctionists. So it just depends on how much laundry they do, washing, if they have any leaky toilets or faucets or anything like that.
So we do need to make a motion before, so we can, do you want, with the discussion, a motion needs to be made first.
I'll make a motion to approve the reduction, complete reduction.
If I may, I do believe that this individual, if they're hand raised, may be white. Sure, yes. Okay, and it needs a second. Second, okay, so now we can go ahead with the discussion.
Did the meter was repaired? What, what was wrong with the meter? Was it something? Most of the meters, when they're estimated, they have to be rewired or they have to have a new meter head put on. Not a whole meter, just the head put on.
Hello?
Hello, is this Ms. White?
Hello, yes.
Yes, okay, Ms. White, was there anything that you wanted?
I just wanted you to know to be able to see if anyone else had any questions for. If you want to address council. If you wanted to address council.
Yes, I would like to. I apologize. I've had a hard time signing in and getting this phone to unmute. I thought I was doing it the right way, but it was giving me, I was having a little struggle here. So my apologies. Yes, on my behalf, I, yes, I did get my meter rewired because I was advised to do so because there was a, I was told that my, I was being charged for for a, I'm sorry, I was being charged as, you know, an estimated meter reading and which I had no idea, you know, in 2019, I had no idea that I was being charged for an estimated bill. So anything that I owed back in 2019, I've actually paid. When I, when they sent my bill, I paid it. And, and, you know, you know, within that, you know, that year, my, you know, my bill was paid in full. So for me to be charged an estimated, you know, back pay of an estimated bill, I just don't understand how am I responsible for that? And I don't feel like I should be responsible for it.
Thank you. Pam, I do have a question. What's on average, how many, on average, do the majority of the residents get an estimated bill first? I mean, you get what I'm saying. Is this, is this an anomaly, I guess I'm asking? When you do estimate bills versus the actual readings?
We do, we do actual readings. We go around, do actual readings and then we have an abnormal usage report that we get, we print out. And on the abnormal usage report, if we don't have a number that has read, the guys will go to the house manually read it from the outside. But if we can't get a read off of that when they go manually to read it, then we know that it's either rewiring or a meter problem. And we send out letters to them. And if we can't, if the letters are answered, then we will up the usage. If they're getting four units, we'll up it to 10 units just to get their attention. And that's how most of the time we get people and we. And we have been getting a lot of people coming in with the estimates. We've, we've also changed our policy. Now that anybody that's selling their house, we will not do a final read until we get in there to fix the meter, so.
So, um, we did send a letter out.
Yes.
Send a letter out, okay. And then also, if this is not approved, Pam should be put on a payment plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody can pay at any time. It would just be that I would recommend that council would remove the penalty then, if you want to put her on a payment plan.
You know, the penalty on stop years.
It's per every read, it's ten percent. But it's not a multiple, so.
So it's been estimated since two thousand and nineteen? And if there was no manual read done on it?
They, they go out every time and do manual reads. But if they can't get a read on it, that's when the letters start going out.
Why can't we get a read?
Because either the outside, the outside radio read is not wired inside or the meter itself is not wired.
Do we do any kind of investigative work on that? If it's repeated?
We try to get in the house to do it. But there's a lot of people during COVID that would not even let us in the house. And so we've been having a really hard time with the COVID that people, and we still have now, now we still have people that will not let us in the house still because of COVID.
And then how was the, how was it figured out how much she used and was billed for? What was?
Per the, when the actual read, when they, the last actual read we had to what the read is now, and when the guys go in to fix the meter, they read the meter right off the meter head. They take those numbers and they bring them to us. And we put them in with the work order and into the system.
Okay. And then whatever she's paid was taken off of all of that, applied towards it?
She is, that's her current bill. This is her current bill, so she has not paid her current bill as of yet. But all of her past bills have been paid, yes.
The estimated bills were paid.
Right, but that, this, this was on top of everything that she had been billed for? This was, okay, and so that would be about eighty-four years, okay? Thanks.
And I think it sounds like, at least from the applicant's explanation, that there's some misconception in that. It's, it's not that we're estimating eighty-four units. Eighty-four units is water that was actually used. It was the estimates that were taking place for, like, almost two years. Because we couldn't get a reading from your house. So because we didn't get a reading, we had to bill you. And so they billed you four units, four units, four units, and eventually jumped it up to ten units to try to get, get their attention. And while I totally feel for the resident, because I was in the same, have the same situation this summer where I had four reads. Four, four estimated reads in a row. And once they were finally able to get a read off my meter, we owed two hundred and ninety dollars on top of our, our normal bill. So, yeah, it was, it was an unplanned expense, definitely. But we actually did use that water, in this case, the eighty-four unit. We actually did use, so personally, and I don't know how the other council members feel, I have a hard time getting a, a credit or a discount because that credit or discount then gets borne by all the other residents. All the other residents in the, in the city are essentially paying for the eighty-four units of water that you use.
Did you give her the lowest rate?
No, we did not. And then I can re-figure it, if that's what council wants.
You gave her the billing.
And it just, it was eighty-four that was billed.
Eighty-four at today's, right?
Today's rate.
I agree.
We can re-figure it. I mean, that's just what went out, yeah, I mean.
I think that, you know, as courtesy, even though the fact is that we did send letters out, you can recalculate it at the lowest rate. Okay. I think that, that, I know, I think that might be a fair situation, but I also am a little fearful of it because I accept precedents about this too.
Right, and, and the resident sent letters and, you know, the estimated amount was multiplied by two and a half times, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, how long has she been receiving the letters?
Since twenty, so she's been receiving letters since twenty-nine years.
I'm not sure how long, because I don't know when Erin sent them out or like last billing person sent them out. I know when I took over in February, they started being sent out at that time. And my new water billing clerk is sending them out regularly.
Okay, so it is, what'd you say?
Nothing, I was just wondering if she was still on and how many lovers she had gotten. That's in our files or?
Ms. White appears to have her hand up.
Yep.
Okay, I'm here now. Hello?
Hello, Ms. White, did you, did you have something that you would like to speak to council about? Or add to, or discuss?
Yes, I believe she mentioned something about eighty-four units, but I was told eighty-nine units, so I don't know. You know, it's just a, you know, a few, a few, a small difference in the amount that she's saying. But as far as the letters that she's saying that went out, I haven't been receiving any letters. Just, I mean, I mean, I've been receiving things from the city as far as my, the insurance that was provided for us to, if we wanted to get involved in getting some insurance for our sewer maintenance or something like that. But I haven't received anything as far as receiving anything as far as a estimated water bill. I mean, and this was like back in two thousand and nineteen, so I haven't received anything concerning, concerning that. It wasn't until I went into the water company to pay my bill. And that's when I was told that I needed to actually schedule for someone to come out because I was, you know, being charged for an estimated water bill. So I was thinking that the estimated water bill was current, like, I was still being charged an estimated water bill. But then, as, as I investigated a little bit more and asked questions, I was told that this was due to a back, a payment from two thousand and nineteen that was unestimated. So I, I just don't understand, why should I be charged for an estimated water bill back in two thousand and nineteen? I just don't, I just don't understand it.
Thank you. I think that what we'll do is just, I mean, my thoughts are, and maybe we have to do a new motion just to adjust to the lower rate because the eighty-four units were used, right?
Right.
Okay.
Or is it kind of got an alternate suggestion? Why, I mean, the, why don't we take the eighty-four units and split them? Would happen on this year's rate, it happened on last year's. Because this is used over a two-year period. So essentially, what we're doing is take all those units and apply it at a lower rate again. You know, she didn't use the water. That's still a discount.
That's what's happening with the back billing, right?
Back billing? But, well.
This is because we still have a black motion going off of this one right now. So we need to redo the motion or just vote this one out? Yes, whoever made the motion.
He can amend it.
Okay.
All, all of my motions to. So all, all that, amend my motion to approve billing the eighty-four owned units at a split rate would happen if it's being charged at last year's water rate and whatever happened to, so it's being charged at this rate.
Need a second. We have to add a payment plan or that she can just do that on?
And if you want to waive the penalty, that should have that.
And, and all, all of my, wait, the penalty.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on it?
Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Can I make a request? While we get down to the council comments. So next on the action request will be the planning commission appointments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We had a resignation at the beginning of the year from our planning commission, Commissioner Dillard-Rousa. Unfortunately, had to resign because she moved from our wonderful community to another wonderful community. And so that leaves us a vacancy. It was posted on the city's website. It was announced in planning commission, I believe I had it in the newsletter. But we have received two applications from individuals interested in serving on the planning commission, Mark Fizik and Bo Tamorelli. And they would be completing Commissioner Dillard-Rousa's term, which would end on August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four.
So.
It is the recommendation of the mayor confirmation by council.
Ms. White, recommendation to appoint Robert Tamorelli.
I have a motion to appoint Bo, Robert Bo Tamorelli to serve on the eligibility to the term ending August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four.
Need a second? Second? It's moving second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple comments. I will later on, but this is the perfect opportunity to do that. Bo, I thanked him at the planning commission yesterday, but I want to do it again. Bo is, is the resident who has literally spent hundreds and hundreds of hours doing water research, water testing, helping us out with our water loss issue. And it's, it's like he's inside of my head every time I'm about to start investigating something. I get a report from Bo that does all the legwork for me and makes my job a lot easier. So Bo, Bo is, is Bruce on steroids.
Oh, boy.
Which is scary. But he's done, done just a fantastic job at helping us out. And I think he would be great for planning commission. I also think that Mark Fizik would be great for the planning commission. And we will have another opening. I know one of the planning commissioners who's permanence in August is not planning on renewing at this point. So I strongly encourage Mark to resubmit when that position opens up. Because I think Mark would also make a request for the commission.
We need a roll call.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried to appoint Robert Tamorelli.
Thank you. Next up is the election commission appointments.
I, yes, and I may have missed Kelton London help me out here. But there is a vacancy on the city's election commission, which according to the Board of Elections must be filled by April fourth, correct? This, the city's election commission is comprised of the city attorney, a councilperson, and the city clerk. Did I miss anything? All right. So again, similarly to planning commission, this is a mayoral appointment with confirmation by the rest of council, but it does have to be a councilperson.
I recommend Jalen Jennings to serve on the later village election commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jalen Jennings to serve on the later village election commission.
Need a second? I'm second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Canes? Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, the city administrator report.
I, for the benefit of our listening audience. Hold on, I needed to add one more to our listening audience. I wanted to just briefly go over the sidewalk replacement program updates that I gave you all in the study session. There have been a lot of residents that have noticed a lot of hot pink marks on the sidewalks. And so there were questions about who, who is conducting these inspections? What's the criteria? Why are so many blocks being marked? And, you know, how much is this going to cost? Is there going to be an opportunity? And the answer is, I have so much information. So these are, these inspections are being handled by Giffords Webster Engineers. We, the city has two assigned engineering consultants, Scott Wrangler and Andy Casper. They both walked those engineers that are doing the markings, the field markings. Scott and Andy both walked with those individuals to make sure that they understood the city's ordinance and the marking criteria before, before they got out there. The city's chapter sixty-two, Article eleven, sidewalk construction, repair, and maintenance, that section of the ordinance is what guides our sidewalk replacement program overall. It outlines what is responsible, what, what is the resident's responsibility? What is deemed non-compliant work? What are the remedies, standards, et cetera? So that's the guiding framework for the, the program. The city also has a sidewalk marking key that, which is online right now. And that has the, the letters and what those letters stand for. So if you see a letter A, that is for a stubborn. They don't all line up with their ABs, but, but that's a stubborn. Those are the trip hazards. There's generally two ways to remedy that. Either removal, depending on how large, how large that stubborn is. Or in some cases, if it's relatively minor, it can be, it can be ground down. B is for broken. There's other scaling, pitting, other defects that are included with that, within that sidewalk marking criteria. Yes, a lot remarked. They were using that, that criteria, those, that, that key in the ordinance is there, is how they were going through to mark. A second walkthrough was done to confirm those quantities. There were, there will be, the residents will see a reduction in what's been in marked, marked on their properties. And yes, the, the markings will wash away after a few more heavy rains. So I'm sure we'll get that in the next month and a half. So there is, the, the prices per square foot. Generally, a sidewalk is about twenty-five square feet. Your normal sidewalk that crosses your front yard, those are about five dollars seventy-seven cents a square foot. And comes out to about a hundred and eighty-five dollars and change. I am expecting that all this information, all these quantities will be finalized and we'll get letters out to residents in the next couple of weeks, early April. They will have an opportunity to either do the work them, pull a permit, do the work themselves, or participate in the city's program. The letters that they will get, willing, I know it's really hot, sorry. The letters they will get will include a detailed outline of the program, an estimate of their response, of the cost that residents are responsible for, the sidewalk marking key, as well as payment plan options. Additionally, and also, all this information will be mailed to them. This will also be updated on the city's website. There will be a very large section in the upcoming edition of Your Town, which will be going out in the next week. And then we will continue our practice from last year of including weekly updates in the e-newsletter. So I encourage all residents to sign up for those. We give an update of what, what happened in the week and then what to expect for the next week. So that is a great way to, to get the most current information. So as well, there is some work, some punch list item work that is still remaining for year one project that is prioritized for this year and will begin as soon as the Frost laws allow. So that's the sidewalk. And then I did want to mention, since we have talked water loss, I do want to let you all know that we have, city administrators have engaged with OHM advisors. They are water. city administrators have engaged with OHM advisors. They are a water loss expert. We were working with the American Water Works Association to really continue to dive into what the heck is going on with our water loss. So a few of us met with, with OHM, it's Bruce, Bo Tamorelli, Scott Wrangler, myself, and Pam. And we met with them and they have some really good ideas of, of where we can start. And I, Bruce, did you want to add? All right, you can add about that. So I, I think this is just one more step that we can check off of, like, yes, we are continuing to do our due diligence. We already have some things to look into, including, you know, maybe there's some other other open valves. So we're, we're exploring all options. And that is all that I have. You do?
I just have one. Well, I actually have two things. Because there's been so much questions about the water bills and that, anybody that has behind your number an E on the water bill, that means you're getting an estimated water bill and you should be contacting the city. If it has an A, that means you have an actual read. So we're trying to wrap up those Es so that we don't have those anymore. So we would really like anybody that has an estimated bill to contact the water department. The other thing is, we do have a new employee at City Hall. It's our administrative assistant, who is also known as our front counterperson. Her name is Jacqueline Dodd. And she is, started last Monday. So she's been here one week. So that's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could say?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
No.
We have selected a company to do photographs of the council and the rest of the city employees. So I'd like to kind of figure out how you would like us to proceed, obviously with getting the council photographed. We'd like to do that right away. I don't know if it's something you want to do before a council meeting. I know that might be a hardship for folks at work. After, if we're going to be this late, that might be an issue as well. So if you can kind of give me some direction and maybe some dates of when you'd like to do this, I can try to get it set up.
Before a council meeting probably would be the easiest to do.
I agree.
Or between, like today, we had a gap of time.
Yeah, we never know when we're going to have that gap.
Either before council meeting or send out a doodle poll.
No worries. I got you covered on the doodle poll.
All right.
Commission and committee.
Yeah, unfortunately, we got a lot of stuff. All right. So let's, let's talk infrastructure first. So again, construction season starts on April 18th. As residents.
Tentatively.
Tentatively, weather dependent. But as residents that probably surmised by now, there is a lot of construction that's going to be going on, roads, water mains, sidewalks, and as well as many other, other projects. Information, detailed information on, on, on all the projects can be found on the city website, on the upcoming Our Town magazine, and then the newsletters. I think it's really important that if you haven't already subscribed to the newsletters, you know, contact the front desk of City Hall and they can, they can get you signed up, especially considering we learned at the census that 99.2% I think of the residents of Lake River have accepted the email. So this is a great way to stay informed of what's going on. And then, most importantly, targeted communications are going out to the people who are directly affected. So people who, whose roads are being redone, the sidewalk work are getting done, as well as, you know, culverts and so forth. And those will have very detailed instructions on things that you'll need to know, like where's the park, you know, when your, when your road is being done. How do I deal with my crash? How do I deal with mail and so forth? The other thing that I wanted to mention, infrastructure, is that one of the things that we need to do or to capital improvement on is, is to get in everybody's home to look at the material that, the water line material that comes into the water meter. We've been asking people to do the self-identification to help minimize the numbers. We haven't had a response to that. We knew that going in and that we were going to have to go into people's homes. And so we're beginning to look into that project as well. And one of the things that, that we began talking about this week was combining that with a, with a meter audit as well to help the accuracy of our billing. So getting the actual reads off of meters, the meter numbers, in the case of businesses, you know, making sure that the bypass tag is, is still intact and that they haven't been bypassing their, their water. And then most importantly, going back to what we had a long discussion about today, we do have a lot of people who get estimated bills. And despite, again, what we saw, despite the letters and despite the increase of the estimated bill to get people's attention, people still ignore them. And so one of the things that what we can also do by combining these two aspects together, I guess, is to also verify that neither the, the radios are working. And those radios that aren't working, they're in the home. They can fix them at that point. So it can really help with a lot of the billing issues that we have. So we're, we're looking into that right now, trying to get some evidence. That kind of leads into water loss. And again, as Susie indicated, we began meeting with, with OHM. They came to us through the American Water Association, who we talked to, and that's, for people who don't know, that's the premier trade group for water utilities. And so they recommended OHM to us. We had the first meeting and the goal of, of this kind of small consulting project, if you want to call it that, is they will eventually give us a deliverable that kind of talks about avenues that we can take to continue searching for our, our water loss issue. They have taken all the information that we've done and all the things that we've done to try to track down the problem. They're also going to get data from, you know, W, I can't remember the name of the data, but basically copious amounts of water data.
Yes.
To begin doing trend analyses and comparing that to other communities. But even that's still, even at our first meeting, we did come up with some potential things that I think it's important for council with all of the residents to, to know. We are working on this. One, one possibility that they talked about was, was, in the overall scheme of things, we're a small community. So we don't have a tremendous flow to our meter. And one of the things they've seen in the past is if the, if the source meter, which is provided to us by Saco, where all the water comes into the city meter, if that meter is oversized for the flow, it can erroneously read high. Erroniously read high. And if it's reading high, that means we're getting billed Saco with a lot of water that we're not doing. So that's one of the things that we'll be, we'll be checking into. The other thing that we talked about was, you know, we were completely surrounded by Southfield. And Southfield does a lot of works projects. And, you know, there could be a possibility that they accidentally tapped it, tapped into one of our, one of our water mains. And so now we've got all this, this usage. So one of the things that we've been talking about, projects that have taken place, especially in the 2017, when waters, when our water used spiked and then stayed at, at the higher level. And then the other thing that, that is just absolutely fascinating.
Yeah, this is cool.
Just blows my mind. But you've got a lot of technology. So the GLWA, the Lake Water Association, is doing a pilot program where they do satellite imaging to look for water loss. And they were looking for volunteer communities. And so we've written a letter to them, volunteering, explaining our water loss issue. We think that'll make us a candidate. What it does is they basically take satellite images of, of the city. And I don't know how they do this. I'm guessing it probably just spec, spectroscopy, but they look for chlorine in the water. And if they see chlorine, then they know it's coming from a freshwater, from a, a water main. So for example, if we've got a water main that's broken into a culvert and all that water is going to the culvert, or we don't know about it, they'll see the chlorine and that gives us a way of tracking it down. So it's absolutely fascinating.
Yeah, they, they told us an example of like, they had found a water, a water main break in a swamp, right? Like it was, the, the, the water line went through the swamp. And so they didn't think to look there. But with this aerial imagery, they could see the chlorine all through the swamp. I mean, it's just. I, I, I do have a note to follow up with them. I'm, it, it's about time. So they did say it was going to be, you know, a couple of weeks. So I think we're right about at that. I think we're right about at that mark. So.
Yeah, and they were, just overall, in general, you know, OHM was very impressed. I remember calling after the meeting. I thought I knew everything about water.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, so they're, they're doing good things for us. The other thing that I think is interesting is we've been analyzing the overnight data, by we, I mean Scott Wrangler and his engineering crew. But in my overnight data, I mean, you know, looking at the water usage between midnight and 6:00 AM. Because at that time, you would expect relative to daytime, you would expect we're using all this water. They're giving only less water. And actually, that's not the case. So he's, he's gotten data from other similar communities. So we looked at hunting, plenty of woods, for example, which are graphically similar to us. And they have one and a half times the population that we have. But yet they're using half of the amount of water that we're using overnight. And even more dramatic is, is Berkeley, who is almost four times the size of our population. They're, they're still using 14% less water overnight than we are in the industry too. So, so this, this could tell us one or, one of two things. It could tell us that, you know, that, that given how much use we're seeing, maybe we're not really using that amount and that Saco meter is oversized for our flow. So that's one possibility. Another possibility, if that meter is in fact appropriately sized, then what that's telling us is that we are actually using that water somewhere because it's going through the meter. So, you know, that tells us that it's, it's not a billing issue. It's not, even though we have issues with the, the SNA system, we found things like the, the back billing, the one and a half inch water meters that weren't being built correctly. So we have those issues, the estimated meter, estimated rate, things like that. But that would still say that we're using that water somehow. So it's going somewhere. So that would give us a lot of good intel. So we did pass that information on to what we have and they're looking at that. And then for the planning commission, we had, we had a meeting last Tuesday. As I think everybody knows, in the work and electric will be able to charge in ordinance for that. And the public hearing was set for that meeting for April 19th. Planning commission, so if you have input for the ordinance, please feel free to come to that meeting. And then the last thing was we were approached by the BP gas station that's going in south of 696 with variance requests. Actually, a couple of variance requests. And basically what, what happened was.
Site amendments.
What that?
Site amendments. What, you guys, planning commission doesn't do variances, right? Proposal.
Right.
Just making sure.
But basically, the issue that we had is there was an engineering oversight that was not caught by the planning commission. And what that was is the, the ordinance requires a three-foot screen wall, basery screen wall on the Southfield roadside, as well as the Coral Gables side. And those walls require 42-inch footings into the ground. And there's a state ordinance that says that a buried tank, it's a gas storage tank, can't be within 10 feet of, of a footing. The tanks are already in the ground and ready to go. So they wouldn't be able to put the walls. They used alternative screening methods such as vegetation. The planning commission board wasn't satisfied with that. And we talked through the possibility of doing a paper wall. So instead of a concrete base, we want little wall of papers like a single plant statement. At least at that meeting, we think that that, you know, more now, we think that that meets the intent of the ordinance. But we did want to check with the building official and make sure that there are any safety concerns associated with that.
All right. No updates on that one yet.
And then the other thing that they will probably be also be coming to council because they also need to do their, their monument sign. And they'll encroach into the right of way. If you have a, a, a commercial license right now, so we may have to modify that.
Thank you. Any other boards, commissions, or committees?
I don't have an update, but I will be attending the first quarterly Semcog meeting on Thursday. So hopefully I can bring back your report.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Southfield Board of Education for hosting a meeting. We've had a good exchange. They were very gracious hosts. There are some plans for developing more of a community school district. They received some good news on the financial front. Their Moody rating was upgraded from B to A. We have asked them to provide some information on school funding because Southfield is a donor district. So that means that the money that comes in from our taxpayers doesn't all stay in our community. We help, it goes out to other districts to help them. And last year, we, Southfield Public Schools returned $780,000. So that's a large amount. And I think that residents need to know that, you know, that's, that's what's happening, that we're supporting other districts. They're going to be having grand opening of onsite healthcare services with Ascension Community Based Health Center, immersive mindfulness, and the Ascension Community Carley Post. They are currently offering telehealth services and dental services, and that is not based on financial need. And we talked about meeting quarterly so that we're all on the same page about what's going on in the community. And, and we know what's going on in the schools. And so I look forward to that. Anything else?
Um, public comment? Anything that someone wants to speak about? You have three minutes to make a comment. Is for just that public to comment. There is no dialogue between the council members and the general public. However, during mayor and council comments, if a council person would like to address what was stated during public comment, they can do it at that time. Is there anyone online that would like to speak?
I see no hands raised at this time. Scratch that, Ms. You're, you may speak now, ma'am. Ma'am, you may speak now.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, um, during your decision, my volume was going in and out and I wasn't able to capture everything that you guys were saying about the decision that you made for my situation. Is there any way that someone can kind of give me an idea of what to expect at this, from this point on? And also, can anyone tell me, as far as my meter or unit usage, can anyone tell me how much units am I being charged for at this point, moving forward?
Yes, Ms. White, this is Pam. The council decided to approve an 84 units, but they want to do a 50/50 split on that. So they want me to go read just your bill and give you the 2020 rate and the 2020 rate, a 2021 rate, which would be a 50/50. So you're going to have part rate, 50% is going to be the 20 rate. And the other 50 will be the 21 rate. They also are going to waive penalties on this. So you can be on a payment plan. And I will have to recalculate your bill on that to find out. Going forward, I do not know what your usage is going to be because that's going to be what the meter is going to read now. Because you will have inaccurate reads on your meter now.
Okay, so, um, okay, all right. I'm trying to think, is there anything else? Okay, so as far as the 84 unit that I'm being charged for, is that like, I mean, is it going to, I mean, because I feel like it's like an assumption that this is what I'm supposed to pay, like the 84, 89 unit. I don't understand how it's being calculated going all the way back to 2019. How is that, how is that being calculated?
Well, from the read you had back when it was an original read to the read that was on your meter, the water is going through and it's still reading on your meter, but we were not able to get a read for that. So the read that came when, after they fixed the meter is the correct read now on your meter and on our software. So what council has informed me to, or has asked me to do is to give you two different rates. So I'm going to give you a lower, the lower rate for the 2020 for 50%, and then I'll give you the other rate for this year. So that will adjust your bill.
Okay.
And I do have your phone number still from the email. So I will be getting in contact with you probably within the day or two and let you know what the new bill will be.
Okay, look, ma'am. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, got it. I'm Nancy Griffin from Rainbow Drive. I don't know if you needed that information. I am here just because I wanted to implore you to maybe for the. I am here just because I wanted to implore you to maybe for the April meeting to have us come back in here in this room. I have to tell you, we're in the other room. The audio and the visual are not lining up on our our screen. Um, I, it's just really awkward and it it doesn't really encourage us, I think, to be here and to be with you and part of you. So I, I mean, I feel like you're protected. I'm, we're all kind of living our lives now out in the world.
They're gonna adjust my bill uh, as for the lower.
All right. No, 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 no problem. So I mean, if someone feels they need extra protection, wants to wear masks, Bruce, that's great, that's fine. But I do, I feel like we're really missing out over there and it's kind of time to bring us back in. Um, I, and I also think you're missing an opportunity with us citizens, your citizens, and getting that interaction. I mean, because you will, there are things, you know, there are ways we've been reacting in the other room and you don't even know, I mean, as a group. And at the most tonight, there were only nine people and sort of in and out. That was the the largest number that was over there this evening. So I'm, I'll, I hope you'll think about it and maybe for April, let us back in, please. I feel like we're the bad children that have been sequestered to another room. So hopefully, because I, we're, we're kind of, we're all wanting to get a little more involved and it would be really nice to be with all of you. So that's it. And it's Bo Timrely's birthday today, so I wanted to wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Bo.
Okay, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Hope I'll be with you next month in the same room. I mean, could someone else come in?
Yes, yes.
Come on down. Please have a seat. Only ask you and speak really closely to the mic.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Bargno. Uh, wanted to first thank the mayor and the honorable city council for your commitment to public service and for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Uh, I'm here to uh, express my interest in joining your community as a cannabis business owner and operator. Uh, I'm here humbly and earnestly to um, try to understand the perspective of the dishonorable, oh, I'm sorry, dishonorable body, um, and the members of the community, uh, so that um, we can try our best to try to take that to consideration. If uh, granted the ability to being able to operate, uh, look forward if that occurs to bring in good paying jobs, uh, additional tax revenue, and also meaningful uh, resources to the community. So thank you and just look forward to learning more.
Hot seat, all right.
Good evening. Thank you guys for having me. My name is Willie McKenzie. I'm the founder and CEO of Heritage Farms. Um, our retail brand is Heritage Provisioning. We are a community focused cannabis uh, company, vertically integrated. Uh, and we're interested in having a store here in in beautiful town of Laker Village. Like I said, we are community focused. We do a lot of philanthropic work donating our time and resources to community groups. We also donate one percent of sales to the community. Um, and I am interested in in kind of getting a sense of where the council stands on this issue and if you guys are planning to move forward. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Hello? Do you seem to speak closely into the mic?
Good evening. My name is Johnny Turnage. I am the contract director and political director at United Food and Commercial Workers Local Eight Seven Six. We just recently moved our union hall a lot closer. We moved from Madison Heights to Southfield. Um, so first coming to say hi is the representative for the union is your new neighbor. Um, we're also here to Willie McKenzie, who just spoke, is the first unionized employer in the state. And we've been uh, supporting him as in him and his endeavors to getting it opened up. We have what's called a labor peace agreement with him and every shop he continues to open will also bring more union jobs.
Well, thank you. Very much appreciated. All right.
So is there anyone else in the I mean, so you have a public person comment that was also sent to us, which was from Eddie Dagger. And um, he wants to know, will the cannabis applications resume? What are we waiting for? What are we still waiting for? Do we have a realistic tentative date on the progression on this matter? We have secured properties and are paying commitments to landlords, so we deserve to know the status. I apologize, I skipped unfinished business.
It's okay, we didn't hear any.
Um, and now mayor and council comment. Um, one, there is a five K coming up um, from the university high. Um, and I'm trying to find the date.
I believe it's May fourteenth.
Yes, you might remember this, uh, I think it was the year before last, I think it was last year. Um, but they run through, walk through, fight through uh, the community and that is something um, that the chief is going to be getting involved in now. Because I know there were some issues before with uh, some of the streets being blocked for uh, for it, so.
I I have reached out to the coordinator and I'm waiting for if I'll go back.
Okay, all right. Um, and so I'm also really curious about the whole cannabis thing that this is coming up today. So I, my question is, is that, you know, we're going to be doing the what next week we'll have it, where we're ready to have a language to be put on the ballot? Okay, or what the council can also do and I'm just
Can we discuss on
I think I had a request to have the language, the decision process moving forward, uh, towards getting this on the panel number. Uh, and so, uh, I think Susan reached out to Scott if he wasn't ready to uh, talk about the language yet at this meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to also kind of address everyone that's been asking the questions that anytime when the council can just open up the application process if they, you know, this is the direction they want to go on, going, right?
Correct.
So it's not, it's either we could put it on the ballot or if, you know, you have a um, the majority of the council, is it, no, it has just the majority of the council can change the application, you know, open the application process and you can be ready to say advocate.
If that's something that, yes, you as a majority of the council wants to do.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that there's two options that go on, so.
Unless, like the third option? Unless there's a public, also a a public um, petition initiated.
Okay.
You know.
Can this council repeal and replace the ordinance in place?
Yep. By the majority, yes.
That would be a simple
If that's what, you know. Any, any majority or any
I'm sorry, I didn't even think about that one. That one kind of will open us up to have, you know, some other repercussions. But the point is there's three options for it. I'm just making it clear that it's not where, you know, one council person or a couple of council people are holding the the application process because it could easily just be voter, that's all.
Yeah, I just, several months ago, I just, it seemed apparent from the attitudes on council, but that it was going that way anyways, for that way being towards a voter. Towards being put in front of the voters. So I said, let's, let's make sure that happens in November. If we don't, this is the November deadline since the deadlines are getting things done to the the ballot, you know, with this uh, significant battle. So make sure it was, you know, ready and on the ballot.
For the November ballot, um, if you do want to put up the ballot, it's um, in May is the deadline.
And I say that with non-transparency. There was a group that approached me, which I said I wasn't meeting with anybody from cannabis because I think that that just keeps, you know, everything clean. But I was told that it's some, that there are people on the council that are talking to the cannabis folks and that it was me that's holding it up. And I just want to make it very clear, I'm not holding up the application process by far because if we want to open it up, we can, you just have a vote about it.
Correct.
Or put it on the ballot. So I just wanted to make
I thought we voted to delay it until we had a city administrator. That was what the vote was.
Absolutely, we did. But I know, I'm just saying we did. But there was a council person that went and talked to one of the cannabis uh, companies. And I'm just clearing it up from my point of view because they're saying it was me that was holding up the application process. And I'm just saying that it's not, if you get a majority that wants to change the process, then, you know, you can, or we can just do the uh, the uh, putting it on the ballot.
I think one of those gentlemen approached me and I, I suggested that they come here.
Great.
That was just, I wanted that clarification. And I think that's all I got. Anybody else?
You ready? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so um,
Was it?
That's okay, go ahead.
Turnish it up first, that's good.
No, go ahead, Karen, no.
All right, so um, normally I go off notes, but I I just want to read this because I want to be very careful with my, my word selection here. This has to do with something I've talked about recently. Um, a few months back, uh, we discussed working on updating our council procedures and adapting. Uh, I'm not sure why the process stalled, uh, but given the unprecedented number of procedural ethical and potential legal acts by one of our council members this past week alone, uh, we need to make these updates a priority. Uh, so for example, tonight, we just deliberated and took action on this White's Waterville issue. Uh, last week, despite prior open meeting act training and multiple reminders from the city attorney, this council person emailed all council members about the same issue. The Open Meeting Act states that all deliberations supporting decision must occur in a public forum, emailing two or more council members on a topic of deliberation of the violation of the Open Meeting Act. This and similar other potential open meeting act violations this past week by this council person continues to provoke the city and other council members full of legal and financial risk. Not to mention the violation of public trust due to the consistent lack of transparency. Another example of this council person's potential illegal activities relates to the villagers' Facebook page. For the last couple of years, it's been council policy that council members do not participate on villagers. This is because the Freedom of Information Act requires the city to preserve and archive all posts on any site that we participated. Because of the fifty-five hundred dollar per year price tag, it would acquire archiving software, council decided that the city did not participate or comment on city issues in the Facebook group. This has been conveyed multiple times to new council of recently of last month fires to the attorney. Yet this council person continues to participate in discussions regarding items that should be deliberated upon by council. While I clearly understand the desire to participate in these conversations as we are all here to help our residents, it's the wrong form to do that. Again, it puts the city uh, at legal and financial risk by violating the Archive Department of Freedom of Information Act. Additionally, it furthers the false notion that the villagers' Facebook site is a place for residents to go to get official answers to city related issues. It is not. The only way to stop this willful neglect is to pass an ethics ordinance to the ballot forward fifty-five hundred dollar invoice to this council person each year for the cost of purchasing the archive software. Further, rather than joining in the Facebook complaints, a council person should use that information to come with, come to council with ideas or solutions to solve the problem, not just join in on complaints. In addition to these legal issues, the toxic environment fostered upon the city staff by this council person continued despite the discussions and pleas of the January tunnel work council session for us to do better. Our overworked city staff continues to regularly, regularly reach out with their request to intervene to make the workplace more tolerable. While this inappropriate behavior should never be tolerated, it has an intensified effect due to huge volume of work done by grossly understaffed administration. The past week, a staff member contacted this council person in an attempt to clarify what was being requested in a prior event. This resulted in several rude, personal, inappropriate comments by the council person, including falsely accusing the staff member of having a cavalier attitude about spending taxpayer money. And also inappropriately explaining that this council person does not owe an explanation to anyone after how they've been treated. All this staff member did was ask for a clarification so that they could better understand this council person's request. Additionally, this council person used an email to a resident as an opportunity to passively aggressively disparage the mayor. In violation of the Open Meetings Act, this email was copied to all council members for them to see the open sarcasm. If this council member has an issue, they need to confront that person individually and not do it through an email to the resident. Our residents deserve better and it is inappropriate to use such a forum to address interpersonal differences. Um, these and several others, you know, there are several other procedural issues and possibly no, but I think I made that point. Multiple trainings, constant reminders, provided reference documents, city attorney advice, laws, and common decency are all continually ignored. We have lost multiple staff because of this behavior. Our existing staff is becoming more disillusioned and we're going to have difficulty hiring a talented city clerk and a city administrator into such an environment. While prior council members informed through the rules and procedures out of respect for the residents, each other, and the office, we're at a point where the only way this is going to stop is to formally update our council procedures and adopt an ethics ordinance to effectively enforce that. Doing so will enable the city to effectively move forward without having to waste an inordinate, inordinate amount of time dealing with disruptive behaviors. I hope we can move forward immediately upon working on our ethics.
Anyone else? She's just going to be a regular part of the meeting? I'm sorry, but the mayor comments on villagers' page all the time.
Then she should pay it well.
Well, I guess she should. And also, she also copies you on all the communications. So there's three council members on the communication. So what, no, she doesn't, oh. Yes, yes, three, yes. But I wouldn't know if it didn't come to me and it had the two of you on it. So that's free, that's a violation.
And are we deliberating about what was on the email?
It did, I was told it didn't matter.
I just read the O M A two.
I was told it didn't matter what the target was. Okay.
My statement is to make sure the rules are applied.
Well, that's interesting because you didn't follow rules during the election. Come on, you've called me out multiple times at meetings.
Be able to, yes, to be able to uh, address everyone. And and you're right, no one individual, like if they're whoever. We should all, all council members will make a greater effort, sure. You know, to to follow that, the O M A rules and and everything, it's all everybody.
I agree. And I, I apologize. Yeah, I was, you're right. I apologize. I should not be right.
Well, mine is out of frustration because I asked for information and I don't get it. I'm not going to apologize. I'm sorry.
You know, I mean, it is the spirit of, and here's the mayor is is trying to
No, I'm, I'm sorry, the behind the scenes things people don't even know about. So it's not, we can do this in public and whatever.
But you can direct and legal counsel. I know we've discussed it. I know we've discussed with Scott, but um, you have a more the council as a whole has uh, more need or a desire for a quicker timeframe, like as quick as possible. Is that something you as a whole can agree to?
We have, we have an ethics one, that's why I don't give notes.
Or make that definitely a better priority.
You have something that you wanted to say here?
Whatever, like unbelievable.
No? I have multiple other things to say. I'm sorry, I now I see why you wanted me to go first. Um, I would like copies of uh, letters uh, and the communication that went out regarding that water issue with Mrs. White, just for an example, to see what's going on. I know there are a lot of communication issues around here. People aren't responded to. They don't get answers. They're ignored, they're blown off. So I would like copies of that just to see what, what the communication was, just to see what our processes and procedures look like. Uh, also, Bruce talked about the water line material. When people do send in the information, uh, no one's responded to. So that might be helpful if people were communicated with after they do the uh, the test or the send in the picture. Uh, the water issue, I'm wondering why it took almost four, between four and five years to do anything about this. We've been losing money for a long, long time. Uh, also, um, there's a push for hawk signals on Southfield Road. I'm wondering where that, uh, where that came from. Is that for the rest of our art money?
That is a DDA initiative to enhance the walkability of the, of the city as a whole. Uh, the first one that we would like to install would be south of six ninety-six and Smart has told us if we can get those hawk signals, then they will also be willing to significantly upgrade the bus stops on both the east and west side to something that's a little bit more um, like what we have out here at city hall. The DDA has selected or identified, rather, uh, three additional tentative locations um, for uh, between eleven and twelve that we would like, we are continuing to advocate for as the road commission undergoes their uh, the work in two thousand twenty-four.
Is that something that residents asked for? Did you get input from residents on that?
Residents through the master plan process have Residents through the master plan process have consistently said that they would like additional, additional crossings because Southfield Road is unsafe. And so yes, that has been a resounding theme in all of our public input. Crossings and walkability, enhanced walkability.
And is that what you're proposing for the remainder of the ARP money?
No, the DDA has no part in the ARP, the ARP money. The DDA is intending to use the fund balance for, for at least a portion of these costs. We're seeking grants to help us do the rest of it. There is significant infrastructure funding coming from the federal government that I'm hoping to leverage.
I'm not even going to address what Mr. Andrews said at this point. Salem? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Return. Have a good night.